I just call us order.
Call us order.
Do I need to take role or Phoebe, do you take role?
I will take role.
Okay.
All right. Committee member wall.
Here.
You committee member Simon.
Here.
Thank you. Committee member Foster.
Here.
You committee member Alden.
Here.
And vice chair Ruth.
Here.
And Chair Johnson.
Here.
And now we'll do the salute to the flag.
Thank you, Amy. Nobody had their mic picked up, but I assumed everybody saluted.
Yes, we did it.
Thank you.
There you go.
This is Chair Johnson. Can I, is there anyone that needs to discuss the meeting minutes from October 26? I didn't have any. I didn't have any edits.
Chair Johnson, we should first go to open time for public comment.
Thank you.
And there's no one here in person and we did not receive any email comments.
Okay. Want to go back to item two?
All right. Do you want me to do it from here, David, or are you doing it?
I can. I can do it. So I'm, I, it looks like the meeting notes, the agenda is out of order for me, but item two is approval of the, of the minutes from October 26.
Yeah, Chair Johnson, you might be looking at last month's agenda.
Oh, we're looking at.
I apologize. Okay, I was, I was, yes, you are correct. I was looking at, I'm trying to be good here. I was looking at November 2016. I'm on the same page now. So does anybody want to, item number three, does anybody want to discuss the meeting minutes from our November 16 meeting?
No.
Can I get a motion to approve them?
Motion to approve.
Actually, I don't think you or I were in that meeting, so we have to, we don't get a vote on this.
Oh, we don't get to vote. I reviewed them, but.
Whoever, people who were present, who didn't completely forget.
Can I move or? Okay, I moved. We approved the minutes.
I'll second the movement.
Okay, all those in favors of perusing the meetings from November 16, please say aye.
Aye.
Any knows? Anybody seeking to abstain?
I guess we are.
Okay. Item number four is we have staff update. Phoebe.
Yes, thank you, Chair Johnson. So I added this item to the agenda to have a space for me to update you when there's things, other things going on in the town that might be relevant to this committee. And so these aren't items that we can have a discussion on that would have to be an agenda is, but it's just to give you an update and give you a chance to ask questions. And so the update for tonight is just that I have started in this position and I'm very excited to be here and be working with you all. And yeah, thank you. And so you all got my sort of introductory email and I've met with a couple of you, but if anyone else would like to schedule a meeting with me, just to say hi, share any sort of feedback you might have on how the committee is going, anything like that. And please do so. Love to get to know you all a little better. And I believe that's it for my update. Adam, do you have any updates for the committee?
Just so you're all aware, we are sort of closing our offices starting on Thursday, this Thursday through January 2nd is the official holiday and then the town council meeting on January 3rd is canceled as well. So just you're aware, there will be some staff just maybe working quietly next week, but it's going to be very low key. So you're all aware of that. Be happy holidays to everybody.
Great. Just a quick question. When is the next council meeting scheduled for?
So we have a special meeting of the town council going to be on January 11th. That's specifically to introduce ordinances related to housing, the housing element. And then there's going to be the regular meeting of the town council on January 17.
Thanks. And then this, this body's next meeting, just to confirm, will be January.
There is a town council meeting tomorrow night, so I forgot, I forgot about that one. So there is.
That's the last one for the year. And then, Phoebe, this body won't meet until January.
January 18th would be the next regular, regular meeting.
Thank you.
So that's it for the staff update unless there's any other questions.
No, thank you. It's so great to have you on board. So we'll move on to item number five, committee member updates. Does anybody have anything to update since we were last together? That's, that's not already on the agenda.
I don't know if this falls under committee member updates, but I did want to give a shout out to the policy subcommittee for all the great work that you guys did around the reach codes. Thank you for all of that and for the outcome. Well, thanks to the town council for that, but exciting.
Anything else?
Not from me. I should take better notes between meetings, but no, lots going on, but I think that, yeah, to Amy's comment. I think that the work that staff was doing around the reach codes and the housing element and all the other things you guys are juggling, that that first step towards adopting reach codes was an important step and working with all of you and this group and the town community to, to really move forward with other jurisdictions to adopt other reach codes as soon as possible. I thought that the that Eli Beckman and the mayor and others on the council, you know, really saying, we want to have, we want to have more by June. We want to be able to address this at the council level by June. So that, that gives us some work to do as well to help staff, to support all of you and, and to really work with other jurisdictions. There is an organ, there's an organization or coalition of climate action, subcommittees or sustainability committees in other towns in Marin. And I think the meeting, there was a meeting a couple of days ago, I think maybe last Thursday, but I think one of us should be, at least one of us should be attending those coalition meetings so that we can work with other jurisdictions to help all of us move forward together.
Did anybody join that Thursday meeting?
I was not able to.
Okay. So I don't know where, where we cover that in the agenda, but I think it might make sense for us to divide and conquer around those meetings. So I don't know if that's a subcommittee item, Phoebe, or we can talk about that now.
I think I, I'd like to reinforce what, what was said about this other meeting, but because of the Brown Act, I think we just have to be sensitive to not have more than three people in attendance.
Right.
But since most of their discussions are around policy, I would just suggest that this policy subcommittee coordinate to have one person in attendance or two. I think we can do that.
Okay, I'll be an alternate if you need it because I imagine they'll talk about engagement strategies too.
I think that's a really good point. Yeah, I, I haven't attended that meeting. I know some of the other members of that. I think, I think Senate Salmo and Sausalito, Fairfax, there may be others as well as you know, community members from other towns are part of that or attend that. But yeah, it's, it's about not just the policy, but it's, it's the coordination and the outreach as well, the community outreach. So.
So if this is a scheduling discussion, that's something that can happen outside of this meeting. It's not subject to Brown Act. So.
The only other update I have is I'm on the engagement subcommittee for the. Can I also be part of the communication subcommittee?
Well, there's three of us on it now.
Yeah, there can't be more than three people on a.
Okay, so.
Right. Well, if somebody decides they want to hop off that, I will take your seat.
Thanks for being so careful, Amy. Any other subcommittee reports?
So I I think we were still on committee member updates.
I'm sorry. Um, yes, item five, committee member updates.
Well, I'm going to talk about the website coming up. That's another agenda. But as far as committed members go, you know, what I'm looking for input, which I always am for the Chronicles, right? I want to understand what Brown Act implications there are for folks who just want to send me stuff to put in. Just do that, I guess. And that would be the only concern I have about that. And I would like to remind everybody to send me whatever you can about it to keep as much new stuff in front of our public as we can for the Chronicles at any rate.
What's your deadline each week?
Well, Wednesday is when they want it. Mike's very good about squeezing stuff in on Thursday. And even some Friday mornings, but I don't want to abuse that. Oh, and Lorena put on the Nextdoor and the, and Facebook notice about volunteers.
Oh, great.
That happened. I didn't see it, but I assume it happened. So anything we want to put out in that, in those media, we can do that as well.
That's great.
Some news that came up is that Vinfast, you know, the Vietnamese auto outfit, a boatload of 999 electric vehicles arrived, I think to Oakland like yesterday or the day before. So I'm going to put that in the Chronicles. That's interesting. Shows how many EVs are coming here. They're going to be doing that every quarter, bringing a thousand cars.
To that note, there's a link that I found that shows all of the EVs and hybrids and just you add your, your very basic information, you know, your zip code and your income, et cetera. And it spits out all of the rebates, all the incentives, federal, state.
Yes.
So.
We.
You already have that.
They are in the, it's, yeah, when we get to the website, I think you'll see, and that's where I want to add as much stuff as we can to that. I received an email from a Lauren Weston. Did anyone else? Code Red for Humanity Pat? Okay. Good. All right. Well, let's, we can just do that as citizens, I guess. I just wanted to know if everybody, anybody else had seen that.
That's January 12.
Yes. Yeah, that's all.
Phil, was there anything from you?
No, I don't have anything.
There, I would, we. Phoebe, you can guide me through when the right time to discuss agendizing this topic, but there's a lot of discussion right now about PG and E's new rate increases that they projected based on costs for nat, for natural gas. And, and for a lot of residents of Corte Madera, they're forecasting a precipitous increase in prices for natural, for PG&E bills, mostly attributed towards pass-throughs for natural gas prices. PG&E is the carrier of the gas and they distribute the gas, but they, they pass through increases in the, in the cost of gas that they see. So whether we want to, I think it's, if we're trying to decarbonize Corte Madera, one one issue that's going to come up in Q1, Q2 is going to, for residents in Corte Madera is, is going to be the increase in their, a projected increase in the rate of the cost that they're going to see for providing national, natural gas by PG&E. So I don't know when the right time is, Phoebe, to discuss if we want to agendize that or not.
Yeah. So if you want to agendize that, that could be brought up in item 10, future agenda items.
Okay.
On the next agenda.
I'd like to make a comment about that. I follow the spot market and it's really quite alarming. The, the prices are going just, it's like a hockey stick on the graph and it's, it's the January bill for December use that is going to be astonishing. Not only is there the, the rate increase, but it's, it's this cold weather that we're having where people are turning on their gas. So people who are on a fixed income are disabled or have, you know, a language issue as well, who are not getting the message from the utility necessarily. Those are the populations that I'm really quite concerned about. It will be, the projection is that the bills could be double or triple what they were a year ago. So year over year increases are going to be heart stopping for, for, for some people. So getting the word out to people about resilience, about really watching their usage now of their heater, all of any, any gas appliances that they have is something that I think if, if we can do that on our Friday announcements or, or if the town has connections to those who work with those populations, seniors in particular, but anyone who is, you know, living at the, you know, below the federal poverty line in our town, if you can identify them, that would be a huge help. But it's, it's a resilience issue too, that we can agendize going forward in recognition of these costs to, to our constituents, our community. And how we want to, as a committee and as a town, come forward, for instance, to the CPUC and to, you know, because they set the rates, but it's really about communication to our community as well. So, yeah.
So if this is an issue that the committee is interested in, it can either be agendized for a future meeting, or if you think it needs to be addressed before then, you could form an ad hoc subcommittee or assign one of your subcommittees to, you know, look into that. And in the meantime, but we can't have a discussion about it now because it's not on the agenda for tonight.
We consider that a community member update.
Okay, yes, to this point it has been, but we just can't have further discussion about it.
Well, I have a question. Does anyone know how, if that's going to impact MCE's rates? Is that something we could put in?
No, because MCE doesn't, doesn't handle gas.
Right.
It's all, it's only electricity. Yeah. And their portfolio is mostly renewable.
Well, right.
So it's not gas powered peaker plants much.
PG&E has some gas powered plants.
Oh, absolutely.
So, yeah, we'll see about, okay. I'm going to get a comment from them.
So can we, can we talk about it potentially, the communications subcommittee discussing that to promote it and then the next meeting go deeper in terms of what you.
Yeah.
Um. Any other updates?
Any other committee member updates? We're still on item five.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if this fits under my update on events, but I guess it's not necessarily an update other than a request for when we have that discussion, how we as a committee and our communication and our events support the new reach codes and how we help educate the town. So I guess that can fall under the events topic.
So you want to wait till six for that?
We can talk about it right now if, if we can.
Why don't we close out on number five and then we'll come back to that. Okay, Amy?
Okay.
Stick to the agenda. Try. Any other committee member updates? Nope. Okay. Amy. Item six. Let's, let's discuss ad hoc committee reports. Or who, who wants to go first? I know that Martin has a topic and Amy, you have a top.
Committee members' personal.
So, so your mic is, is not on.
I missed one meeting that I'm not on at all. So item number eight, discussion of upcoming community events. I wanted to talk to this group and there was a document that went out in the packet along with three questions. Um, so that will, I will hold for eight, but I do want to.
Okay.
A little bit about how as a group, we support the, the new reach codes and educating the community. And I would love for any thoughts or feedback. I know that there has been an email floating around about needing to, are we allowed? Yeah.
I think it's a discussion item, looking for feedback and for discussion about action, that would be a agendized topic. If it's a report that you have on this subcommittee.
I don't have a report.
Then this is where we talk about some.
Got it. Can I talk about the events in the next?
Yeah, and that would be like a certainly.
An eight.
Future agenda and put that on a, or there's something discussion of upcoming community events, certainly.
That's it for me then.
Okay. So are there any other ad hoc subcommittee reports? Martin, was that you? Or you're going to wait for seven?
I'm going to wait for seven because that's the topic.
Okay. And, and I think, I don't think the policy subcommittee has any topics for item number six, do we? So we jumped around. Trying to be better. Numbers, so I'll close out item six, item seven, discussion of CAC website enhancements.
Right. Well, it turned out to be a nine page addition to the, but much of it was illustrations. I don't know the depth to go into it right now. But let me, I'll start dealing with it in sections and get responses to what was distributed. I gave an update on, you know, meeting with Mike and Lorena. And the banner they came up with is, you know, you can see later on, they, Lorena knows how to update things. We can do that and Phoebe can work with her on that as well. I talk about pie charts. We're going to include those if we all want them. Okay. So let's get to the first part, which is content concerning a quarter meter of town and Marin climate information and the CAC. These are topics that I picked up. Most of this came from what David talked about earlier and others. CAC in the news, if we have anything on that. A link to our climate action plan, a link via the MCEP website to the action plans of other Marin jurisdictions. The grand jury report and Corte Madera's response to it. And the new construction, all electric ordinance, which should include the new EV infrastructure. And then as other subcommittees develop, they can add their bits to it about student ambassador program and activities and events. Any responses to, to that?
So is that, are you envisioning that as like the, the landing page with the different sections?
Yes, originally it had been, if you look at the Planning Commission, and I didn't do a mockup because I don't have that capability. But there's, there's a left and right.
Yeah.
That we can use and down the left side, we can put stuff that would like always be there.
Okay.
And on the right side, this is my idea, stuff that would be more changeable. And I've talked with Lorena about doing that and that's not an issue to accomplish that. What we need, of course, is copy to go in there. And so that provided as much of that as I can at this point.
Is it this first part on that right side or all of this that you've listed here?
All of this.
Okay.
On the left would be on the left side.
Oh, okay.
We can divvy it up. I think, you know, it is going to be, everybody wants to be an art director, but you know, how, how to do that is going to be, I think, how it looks when Lorena is doing it. And if she's needs to move something somewhere to balance it, I don't think that's an issue at this time.
Okay. So the idea is, do we like all of this and then she'll take.
Yes, that really is where, where, where I think we're at.
Okay.
As a committee designing this camel now.
Speaking of everyone wanting to be an art director. Um, can we have visuals on this?
Or drafts?
That, you know, photographs or, or short.
Oh, yes. Oh, you're saying, could you supply pictures? Absolutely.
Can we add those to the site?
Yes, yes, you have, yes, yes. More the merrier. The next topic area would be, you know, what Corte Maderans can do for home electrification and green transportation, which could have a classier title like, or more appealing like feeling gassy. That's something I came up with. Or, you know, replace gas with electricity or something. So, but, but here the, the meat is that to have, you know, what rebates are available. The key thing here from, to accomplish what I had wanted to do, which is to make things easier for Corte Madera residents to implement these changes is to have Mark Chabria of Electrify Marin can be our ombudsman. So you can actually call him up and have a talk with someone about what the best thing to do next is given your situation. Because otherwise you get into a dozen rabbit holes and it's hard to figure out what you need to do. So we talk about the rebates that are available from Marin, how to get there and then with Mark's availability to help you out. The Inflation Reduction Act incentives for you. This is something we had put in Chronicles some time ago. It's interesting. It shows, you know, you put in your, I don't know if you've all been there, but you put in your zip code and it says, wow, you get 14,000 bucks or whatever it is, you know, based on your characteristics. But this is an example of something that teases the reader and, but has done what to do, you know, says, well, great, they're there. You know, this is what the politicians did for us. That's great. Now what? You know? So you go to this benefits calculator and say, that's cool too. The switch is on and in talking with with Phoebe, this is a good thing to use. This is a good thing to use as the basis for allowing folks to go find the links that are meaningful for them. Because you can go in there and I don't know if you all done it. It's a good thing to do. And this is something we need to to promote. It will tell you where to go to find incentives that make sense for you. In your location, your demographics, whatever, in your situation. Single family, multifamily renters, homeowners, contractors, all of these different sites, which I list on the next page. You know, have different approaches to getting those answers and it's it can be very confusing and time consuming. And the switch is on. Plus, you can sign up. It switches on to say, send me updates when these things change. Which is so important because they change all the time. They run out of funding. And you can, I I've been very frustrated. I don't know if you can tell. I've been frustrated by that. You know, for the last years, I've been looking into how to present this and that seems to be a good solution. Next is resilient neighborhoods, just to include them as a you know, something to do if you want to find out what you can do to reduce your greenhouse gas emissions, among other things. Um, and participate in their in their group meetings. Uh, they were also included in the Chronicles a couple of issues ago. Here's all the things that switches on has. We know all about them. Bayren, MCE, PG&E, California Energy's Smart. And then the other ones. Um, I believe that for the Golden State rebates are not significant for us because they don't support the transition from gas to electric. They just maintain you in gas or electric. The next section, I'm now on page four of this, is for electric vehicles, which should be changed to uh, green transportation alternatives should be the heading so that we're not just, it's not just all about cars. Even though that's what we mostly do. So it will include ride and drive clean. It'll include the walk bike Marin. Transportation Authority of Marin, all those, so that we'll have access to them. And that's really the end of the inclusions. What I have on the following pages are, well, first is the banner that was came up. Uh, what I submitted to them and what they were able to do with it, which is what we're now using. If anybody has suggestions and, you know, that I think we want to have something that's consistent so that people know, yes, this is the Climate Action Committee stuff. And you know, this is what we have for now.
I like it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not an art. I don't want to be an art.
Art director, but. I, yeah, I'm gonna make that request to see if we can do that.
Yeah, but it looks really good. And thanks for pulling all that.
So that's that. And then here's stuff that I think we need to have on the website that shows that we know what we're talking about and we're and and why we're we're doing this. Background on and some of this is pulled from the Climate Action Plan. But it's stuff that speaks directly to what we're doing uh, for reducing corvidary greenhouse gases, you know, by sector and then why, you know, we're we're facing what we're facing with the fossil methane that we're burning in in houses today. And then at the end of this is a link, this is the kind of link we could have. Again, this, what this shows is that a lot of people are interested in this. A lot of entities are addressing the issue. This doesn't tell a consumer or a citizen, what should I do next? But it does say all kinds of things are happening in this in this space. So we want to, we want to have that in there and I'm be willing to look at other suggestions for this. I think at the end of this, I don't know if this is the time to do it, but my vision is at the end of this meeting, we'll vote on whether we like this. And then ask staff to make it happen. Is that a legitimate approach? I'll ask the.
Yeah.
Police.
Let's let's see if there's more questions or comments. I I really liked your suggestion on mobility. The edit there to the power referring to electric mobility.
Right.
It's it's not in this document. You you gave it verbally.
I thought. The green transportation alternatives. Yes.
Yeah, I would support that. And then just some really small comments about, um, since our climate action plant planned is is a few years old now. Uh, dates or hyperlinks uh, might be useful for people. Some of this could be hyperlinked. I think most people know how to work a hyperlink now.
Yes.
But I, this is tremendous, Martin. I I'm just thrilled.
I I think what I want to do here is add a link to the twenty twenty or twenty, the update that Christie, Christine O'Rourke provided, just put those to that, you know, the the webinar she hosted. The slides are self explanatory, so we don't need the verbiage to it. So that's
I would.
Item seven or whatever it was.
I would echo. I want to thank you. This is a lot of work to put everything in one place and to do all that research. So I really appreciate it. Thank you. A couple of things, the the pie charts, we just need to update those with Christina's content. If their numbers are more recent. Transportation's at seventy percent as an example versus sixty eight. The other thing is for the cap, there was some discussion of doing an executive summary on our page, and I think that was one of my to do items and I didn't do it because we weren't moving forward, but I'm happy to, or maybe there's another way to do that, Phoebe, but I, my comment in that is that how do we make this super digestible and a way that people understand where we're at in terms of the numbers today, what our goals are and where they go to do it. Um, and I think that's tricky when we've got so many great resources and content, but so I don't know how we go about that.
I've got a discussion question. Given the meeting that we had with the Cora Madera Lions Club and Fred, do we meet with Chamber of Commerce? Maybe it doesn't matter. And how useful would that, would this page have been for that? And then how useful would this be going forward with like high school students? For for the, just a discussion question for the group. Directed at Amy and Meredith.
I would say in terms of making it digestible, like you said, Amy, I think the pie charts are really helpful, especially if people are looking to reduce their um, like if they're gonna pick one area to reduce, I think having those up top, like seeing seventy percent transportation, getting those updated numbers and having those visible as one of the first things you see, as well as numbers on our goals would be helpful for students and anyone accessing the page.
Um, and I would say that it would have been very helpful when we spoke to the Lions Club and if we want to make um, community outreach a big part of our year in twenty twenty three, it'll be important to have a spot to send people. So that's my two cents. I think you would agree, like they were afterward, the folks in that group were asking us for the presentation and for more content and we were like, it's coming, so. So absolutely. And I think that and when we get to the events, we can talk more about it, but we need a way to amplify this if we're really going to make a dent and so. Um, but Phoebe, I know I asked you a question, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think Martin has a a section for sort of general climate information and that's definitely a place where there could be a short summary of the cap. And yeah, this is the website update is something that can be a sort of iterative process and
And ongoing.
And ongoing. Yeah, so Martin's drafted this version and then we can take that back as staff and implement it and see what you all think and make edits from there.
And do we have enough from Christina's deck or do we need a executive summary or am I off the hook on that one?
You should look at it and see what you think.
With Christina's deck? Yeah, I think it's very.
I mean, if it needs an intro, that's that's fine.
I don't think so.
What I, yeah. Content is what we need. Developing the content. Narrative is what we need. There's lots of good stuff.
So are you saying that you think Christina's deck does it or are you saying?
For now, for sure.
One, we could, just a suggestion, we could hyperlink, we could hyperlink to her deck as well.
Yes.
So we we could introduce that there is an update, the numbers have changed since the cap. And then we could link to her her materials.
Yeah, and even use her visuals.
Exactly.
Yeah, the whole presentation, absolutely.
Yeah, I think her visuals are compelling, having a an opening paragraph that sort of summarizes why this is important is great. I think, yeah, ha- having the hyperlink, of course, but but little callouts with visuals, I think, tell the story for most people in a in a more immediate way, rather than go to this link and read the report for yourself.
Yes, I want to include the pie charts.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Got to be on the website.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And something to consider adding is a calendar of of
Yeah.
It's around town that or or things that are coming up before the council, things like that.
Okay, that's good. That would be, yeah.
I like events that are being discussed at council before the before the middle of June.
Martin, and then the only other two additions I would say is our mission and purpose as a group.
Yes. You've done that.
And then I would say a a way to connect to volunteer.
Good idea.
I have one more thing to add as well. On the MCEP website, they have an interactive map that shows historically, going back to two thousand and five, greenhouse gas emission reduction, uptake of EVs, town by town. And I mean, it's it's five or six categories, waste diversion, water usage. And it shows, it shows over time, because it's interactive, where each town is. It's not like it's getting a grade of A, B, C, D, F, but it it shows, oh, it looks like someone's zooming this. No. It looks, it it allows, it allows you to look at what your town is doing and also see what the other.
And which site is this?
It's on the MCEP website.
You have it in.
The Marine Climate and Energy Partnership website.
I have.
Is it on the map? I mean, is the map?
Right here.
But the map, specifically the map, I think.
What page is that on?
Is a good link to have.
So it's MC.
Oh, right, right, right. Okay, yeah, yeah. And you think that we should bring that forward a bit? With the link to their scoring of, even though that's not the term you used. Scoring of towns as well.
It's not, yeah, it's it's a, it's an interactive map of the county of Marin that shows unincorporated county.
Oh, yeah.
All eleven jurisdictions. And there's about five categories that are tracked. So from.
Yes, I I I remember seeing that.
And but having that, you know, and and it's kind of a, here's how we're doing and here's how everyone else is doing, as opposed to just going to the MCEP.
Yes, okay.
This as a specific page.
Well, we'll see.
Our specific.
Yeah, and we we'll get into the weeds is Davis is going of how to one thing about having a link is off you go to that link and you never come back.
Exactly.
Okay, so the extent to which you can keep keep them on your site is something to pay attention to. And I don't know if we could have a link to that map feature and then bounce right back or not. I don't, you know, that's technology that we'll have to talk to Lorena about.
Sounds good.
Anyway, appreciate it.
Um, one one thing you could inquire about is if they have, if MCEP has an API that we can then connect to and then their data would stay live. Any any entity that we want to connect to, we could be connecting to an API that they have for any data.
And wouldn't have to leave the site.
Exactly.
Right, I'm at the end of that presentation, any more updates that folks have to go? We've done here.
Martin, I was thinking about the journey that we took to get here and that Phoebe wasn't part a party to, but Phoebe, um, individually, collectively, we have in the past, done some research on on how other jurisdictions communicate and use a web resource. So this conversation is loaded with all of that background. So we've we've been to other communities that we thought were doing a good job of communicating and providing resources. And um, and we were just disappointed that we weren't able to serve the community in the same way. So what you're seeing here is is the outcome of lots of discussions.
Yes. Yeah, I didn't think up all this stuff on my own.
But it it's, you know, uh, there was a a predecessor to this body that did some work on this. So now we're bringing it into this body.
Yeah, well, I'll be happy to get it on the website.
Okay. So at the end of this, what what do we do? Do we?
I think, Martin, you you made a recommendation of next steps and that sounded logical to me. Maybe you just restate this kind of next steps. And then see if if it, um, Phoebe, do we need to take an action here?
I I don't think you necessarily have to, but if you would like to vote to a motion, you're certainly welcome to.
What what we could do, Martin, is you could state what those, what your recommended steps are. We could see if anybody opposes that.
All right, yeah, okay. What I would do is incorporate the comments that we've made this evening. Send it to, well, all of you, just because I do that. And send it to Phoebe and Lorena and start to get them to implement it.
And that implementation would be, if if I could amend your comment there, Mark, there would be an, we're probably gonna have an iteration for this body to have comment on that before it goes live. Something like that.
Right, we could look at it at the next meeting, for example.
Yeah.
If it's done by then. Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Martin.
It sounds like the the committee supports that direction.
Or any anybody want to say that they pose that direction? Okay, there we go. Thank you so much, Martin.
You're very welcome.
Item number eight, nine.
Eight.
Eight, discussion of upcoming community events.
Okay. Three questions that I sent, well, that Phoebe included in the packet around what we want our events to look like for twenty twenty three. What should we do for Earth Day and how do we how do we start to build our volunteer group? And so I've put some events into a timeline, which are very basic. They're ones that we've talked about in the past. So how I'd love to to address or throw at that first question around our events is to think about the first part of the year and how how we drum up as much engagement as possible between January and June and around Earth Day. To obviously promote the actions that we've been, we've been behind as a committee up until now, and then some of the changes that are coming around new construction and EVs. So I will pause there and can everybody see? Does everybody see the events there? They're pretty. I will pause there, and can everybody see? Does everybody see the events there? They're pretty.
Yeah, page fifteen in the packet.
Okay, so. Farmers markets, like a regular engagement. In that event. The chamber event and any, frankly, based on the feedback we got around the chamber reception, any events for chamber. Um, that we could, we've talked about. Doing what we call advocacy presentations, so we tested it out at the Lions, doing some form of that at the Chamber. And any other groups in town that would be our commercial um. Community. And then the Lions Club Crab Feed, I know we tried to be a part of that in some way last year with some promotion, so it's early enough that we could potentially do that. And then April would be Earth Day, and then in July would be the Fourth of July parade. So those are the events, I'll pause and just say. What else are people thinking in the way of events that we can participate in?
Is there a calendar for the outreach on the reach codes?
No. Will there be? Events around that, supporting that? Okay.
Yes. I don't know if we call it event, but yeah, outreach efforts.
Okay.
Certainly could tie into. Some of the things that you're talking about now. If I can, um. I think the, you know. Just having gone through the housing element outreach efforts, I would. Farmers markets is great.
Okay.
There's you get a lot of people coming by who are already sort of browsing and engaged and. Feel excited by just. Talking to people and being out there in the in the midst of the town center there, so I I would recommend that one as a as a good way to interact with people informally and. Not have, you know. Non sort of. Um. In a very approachable way, I put it that way. Um, so that would be something I would be looking at from our side in terms of. Reach codes, we'd probably do something like that, but we'd also want to get specific stakeholder groups together if possible. Around that, um, whether it's contractors we know through. Building Department um work. Or whatnot, um. The Marine Building Industry is is somebody that would certainly want to reach out to. Um. But beyond that, no, it's something that we'd have to. Develop as part of the work plan, the first half of twenty twenty three, the next agenda.
Okay.
Well, it's actually. Related to the next agenda.
Yeah, my question came up because I think there's an opportunity to. Synchronize and co-benefit here. We we wouldn't want, we don't want to be counterproductive, we, you know, obviously, there's a benefit if we synchronize some of those communications and activities.
Yeah, and 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 Fourth of July as well, we we were at the booth at the last year. Um, that was. Worked well, very well, a lot of engagement there as well.
Is that right?
Yeah.
So we we were hoping to be a part of that, but we were a little late in organizing efforts, I'd like to start in the beginning of the year, so we're ready to go. Um, I would say to Dave's comment around synchronizing efforts or any way that we can support your team. And pushing out the messaging and making sure that people are getting the information they need and understand. Because I think a headline. You know, there needs to be more background. Um, so I put that out there. Are there any other events that? That are coming up in the first half of the year that? Like I go to the Chamber site. And it's. Hard to find them, actually, other than like school, and maybe that's something we can get to.
Yeah, if HOAs, um, having a list of the HOAs and and. Making, you know, doing outreach there so that we develop relationships with the HOA boards or leadership. Um, not to just, you know, jump in and say, we want to give a presentation, but to. Just let them know we exist and we want to know them, we want them to know us. And then, you know, offer to make ourselves available, but I think for all of this, the things that you have suggested. Um, or we've suggested, um, we've got to have volunteers, this is. This is a small mighty group here, but we can't be in all places all the time, so we've, I think. That might be one of the the key things, I mean. Outreach, get people excited, but then it really try and recruit. Um, volunteers that can support all of this outreach.
Yeah, and that's my third question, I'd love to talk a little bit more about volunteers, so. Agree, hundred percent agree. Um, was there a was there a list of HOAs that went out? I could have sworn a list was floating around or something.
I'm not aware. Not aware of anything that we've provided, although we have in the. Distant past had a list of, I I believe.
Like a directory of.
Yeah, I don't know how up to date it's been, I maybe something was floated your way prior to my involvement.
Okay, maybe a drumstick or something.
When the cap was being um uh. Um, socialized and introduced to the public. There were a number of um. HOA meetings. We could, a- and and that wouldn't be, it would be very um similar to the way that. Uh, climate change has been communicated with neighborhood organizations. Um. I attended a couple of those. And I thought that they, it was a really good venue, especially for East Side Quarter Maderans. That that are interested in sea level rise. Or um. And uh. I thought it was pretty productive. I think they, in my neighborhood on the east side, I think that they they probably, I think, this is going from memory, but I think they aggregated a few. Um, neighborhood groups and had a working session. So if we came back to the same. Uh. M- meetings to the same audiences. With. With the report out from the Climate Action Committee. Um. I think that's in the body of work from when the cap was being written. It could be resurrected.
You're saying that there is a a list of contact?
Well, in the report that the consultants made, created. Um, on their process that the city asked them to do with the. Um, with the town. There were a number of workshops that were held by. An aggregation of neighborhood groups. For example, that uh the um East Side and Court of Madera had a couple of working sessions that took place in the Cove School. And it certainly. Yeah.
Are you speaking to the Climate Adaptation Assessment or CAP? Or the Climate Action?
Um, it was.
Can I?
My recollection was both.
But th- there's neighborhood response groups. That are involved in emergency.
Yeah, that, yeah, but it was, there's a lot of overlap. Between it, the way they communicated with those groups. Um, and that it could be what we could be scheduling here could be self similar to the communication that those groups had in the past. So I'm I'm trying to continue a dialogue that was started on, I I think it was climate action as well as cap. But and and those consultants in in the city files would be the records of those meetings and. And who and and where they were held, how many groups were aggregated into a meeting?
As I would ask as well, so. I was at a Cove meeting during the Climate Adaptation Assessment process, at least one of them, um, yeah, those were. Fairly well attended meetings, I don't think they were HOA affiliated, they were just publicly broadcast over to the. Mariner Cove, Marina Village area. Um. But. I guess. I'm trying to understand, though, is are these upcoming events to do what specifically? Is there, is it to get volunteers or to? Talk about the work of the committee, so that.
So kind of, well, so there's two, I think, two ways to look at it, the way we're thinking of events or the way that I'm thinking of events is those standing events that are already there that we can table at and be a part of. And then there are events where we would have to sort of create and go to to speak about what our committee is up to, stats on that are in the cap. And get, we did something similar to this at the Lions Club, and it, I think, was received really well in terms of where we're at and what the actions are you can take.
Okay, so educational events essentially, and okay.
So is it, would it be possible to connect with the adaptation group and ask them how they pulled these? Events together?
Um. Yeah, well, uh, there's no group, so that was, we hired a consultant, we had a, we had a consultant contract, I mean, certainly, um. We also have, that was the housing process as well, there are a lot of. Consultants used for helping us with outreach. Um. You know, we can certainly provide you how we. At with the town, try to get at the word out, so to speak, in terms of all the things going on and through our. So posts and whatnot, um. And it just depends how. Detailed you want to get, you know, I think. Maybe David, you know, the next time we go around, for example, and talk about sea level rise out in. Mariner Cove, it's going to be every door, you know, letters specifically to each homeowner, and they're going to get that, so, but that's a level that. I I'm not sure if that's what you're 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 talking about, so there's no um. It, you know, it just. I think it's depends on what. If you're, we didn't link up with any other organizations, I said, I would say that with the exception of there are a couple. I have met with homeowners associations in the past. I think once at Aegis, they had a meeting there.
Okay.
Um, I don't know.
I reserve that one.
Okay.
So maybe we do this, if if people in the committee or the staff know of HOAs or something, then maybe I can just aggregate it. Um, Dave, why don't we just start with the one in your community? And see where that takes us, so if you want to, can I, I can communicate with. Dave over email about this, right? So maybe you and I can connect and see how we might set something up with your HOA and then just start from there. It's interesting, I've had a couple people, just friends, say, oh, you should come to our book club and talk about that, those are. A, you know, I mean, we could all be maybe doing a couple of those every three months or something. Um, okay, so all as an action, I'll reach out to you, Dave, and we'll just get the ball rolling, and if there are other um. Community groups, whether they're HOAs or the um. Emergency response, you can send them to me and we can start to schedule on. Um, this, the other piece to this is the content, so Leslie and I had done that presentation, so. I'm happy to help get that to a place that we can just take it out.
And put it on, and put it on the website, too.
Yeah, so um, what do you think the next step is there, and how can I help?
Me finishing it and giving it up. Yeah.
Or you can pass it over to me, I mean.
Yeah.
You can pass it to me.
Happily to happily do that, yeah.
Okay, yeah. All right, so then I'll, in the event subcommittee, I'll do the advocacy and communicate with you on that deck.
Fine.
Right, I can do that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, just two. Any members, that's fine.
Okay, and then um. And then there's the chamber. So to the note that we got, um, around the chamber, I think it would be good to do a meeting there. Um. So once we get that deck in a place, yeah, we could use that.
Yep. Okay, let's plan to do that in January.
Okay. And who wants to volunteer for that meeting? I'll go, Dave. We're gonna kind of need.
Um, if I, I'm I'm willing to participate, I'm I have this calendar pretty far in advance, so I don't. You know, I had a conflict with the Lions Club that I wanted to do that, and um.
Okay.
But it, um, you know, I I I will, I will co-present at these. It to represent our group. Um, I I just need to get it on my calendar soon.
Okay, so um. We'll work on the presentation, and then I'll see about getting us on the calendar for Chamber.
But, you know, I I I feel like as a chair, whereas it's sitting chair, it's kind of, it should be something that I should be willing to do, I'm willing to do it, it just needs to get on my calendar early.
Okay, well, I'll work on the times with Eli, and then we'll go from there. Um, I'm just being mindful of time, and I know we have a couple of other things to get to, so um. Earth Day, has anybody, oh, sorry, one last, well, I'll get, I'll do it when we get to volunteers, Earth Day. Any thoughts on Earth Day, what this committee wants to do? We've slowly, year after year, gotten a little more involved, I see a big Earth Day coming this year. Any ideas?
I think we should, well, we can certainly have more conversations about this, um. I think towards the end of April. Everyone's inundated with Earth Day, Earth Day, Earth Day, and it'd be nice to avoid that, and because I think we just get lost, but if we could start earlier in the month. Um, and make some kind of commitment with the council and our schools to do, to to have, you know. A celebration, um, a, you know. Flags and banners and um newsletters and what have you that really trumpet. Earth Day ahead of the end of April.
In twenty twenty three, a birthday is April twenty second.
Yes, it's always April twenty second.
I know, that's, that's.
What day of the week is that?
Saturday.
The Saturday, oh, that's perfect that it's a Saturday, um, I'm actually doing April first, um, I'm part of the United Nations Association's regional. Big. Webinar, and it's really focused on what you can do at the local level. So.
Great.
Yeah, I know, I'm kind of, I'm kind of overwhelmed by this, but I'm also excited to be part of it and putting it together, so um. I think tying the things in and that can go on, you know, on a calendar, but but really doing um something with the schools. Um, including in our elementary school and our our middle school, um. And whatever community groups, I mean, that's kind of a nice way to introduce the committee and the town's work around climate um to everybody, um. Yeah.
I agree, I would love to do March and April, you know what I mean, just have whatever we're doing.
Yeah.
Whatever that looks like, if it's the farmer's market and then the school event, and then. Um, and you and I in that presentation used Corder Madera can make a world of difference, and maybe that's just like our theme through that.
Oh, we could add that to the banner.
I love it.
Hmm.
Um. Any other ideas around Earth Day?
I know we've run up into spring break conflicts in the past, so I like the March to April, like earth, starting early, because then if we want to engage schools and families, too. We won't have to worry about people being gone.
Yeah.
So.
Sorry about events.
Yeah, Earth Day.
And yeah, uh. We talked about having a budget for stuff. At some point, and it sounds like we're, you know, we can plan stuff, but we need to know what our parameters are for that, and do we have an idea who's there? And.
We're all looking at you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Budget for that, I I'd have to get back to you, I can look into it, I'm happy to look into what. Was budgeted for. Um.
I thought it was hundreds of thousands of dollars. No?
One point six five million, you know, I I'll I will get back to you, um, and I can do so. We don't have to wait till the next meeting, I'll just.
Um, on the on the budget front, we've, I think we've in the past just got discussed the. Tabletop materials and a banner that we want to have, and it, we may want a budget to refresh them. Um. Uh, Leslie and Amy, I think you've been closest to how much those things have cost, but. Is is it possible for you to?
I did a spreadsheet on that at one point.
Yeah.
And I mean, it's now years old and all that, but at least. I could send it to you.
I mean, my feeling on it, like. I'm with you, I would love a lot of money, but I I don't think we need a lot to get this done.
No, no, but having a budget is so we don't go back with little nickels and dimes every time would be a good idea.
Yeah, so whatever, I mean.
I want to say there was something, I just don't have the specifics.
Okay. Um. Okay, I want to move on to volunteers, is there any other thoughts on Earth Day? If not, that's okay, just keep them brewing, and when we get together next, maybe we can. Make this a standing agenda item as we work toward March, April.
Yeah, and this, this is definitely a, an area where I'm really happy to work with the committee on this, so it doesn't even necessarily need to be. In a whole committee meeting, if the subcommittee wants to discuss something with me.
Great.
Get a cohesive calendar together. And definitely something we can work on.
Perfect, that's great. Okay. Thanks, Phoebe. Um, volunteers, so um, thank you, Martin, for putting it in the. Chronicles, I did have a couple people reach out, so we'll see. Um. I also reached out, and I saw too, Meredith, maybe we're talking to the same group, I reached out to the. Um, Climate Action Committee, they have a different name at Redwood, and she's really interested, Annika, in getting involved, did you speak with her? Yeah, what did she have to say?
Um. She was saying she'd love to plug in on our efforts wherever we can, I talked to her, no, this was but last. She was saying she'd love to plug in on our efforts wherever we can. I talked to her, no, this was but last month, so probably about the same time you're talking with her. Um, yeah, I, I think we kind of both connected on that.
Okay, great. So I sent her our committee purpose and mission and then just what we're working on, and maybe we can get together with the students and create something and funnel this through the schools. So that would be great. Any other thoughts on volunteers, please send my way, but I think we have to be in active recruitment in every public engagement outreach we have. Um, Meredith, what about the student ambassadors for volunteers? I think we could start getting them together.
I think definitely for things like the farmer's market, I think that'd be really uh, easy to get them together for that. I don't know about like if we're presenting, I'm not sure they necessarily go up to that because they're younger, but definitely for ta- more like the tabling events, I think that would be uh, good to get them in, involved in that.
Yeah, so what, um, I know that farmer's market is noon to five. So I don't know if after school.
I think after school would work.
Okay.
I just need the dates probably sooner rather than later.
So it's any Wednesday.
Any Wednesday.
Yeah.
Okay.
So you let me know how many student ambassadors would be involved and then we can just set it up.
Sounds good.
To that, not only having a, a calendar for volunteers, but we need to have sort of training materials. So that when they're standing behind um, a, a table at an event that they can actually engage. And I think that that, that piece is really important to, to put together.
That's what we need a budget for.
Well, yeah, but.
You have a draft of.
We have a draft, yeah, but we just need to, you know, have it in binders.
Yeah.
And in a way to bring them in and get them up to speed. So they don't feel flat-footed or.
It's hundreds, not thousands of dollars, but.
Maybe. Five or ten dollars, yeah.
So I have a draft of the talking points, so I'm welcome to any feedback on it. Um. Any other thoughts on volunteers?
I think if we have materials to show volunteers that they're not just going to be dumped and thrown something, but they'll have stuff to work with, it'd be much easier to recruit them and be more effective.
Okay.
Yeah, what are we asking of them? What's the job description essentially?
What does it mean to be a volunteer?
So Phoebe, I have a draft of talking points for people at the table. Is that something you and I could work on?
Yeah, definitely.
Good.
Um, Amy, uh, you didn't include the e- events like the EV uh, event you did with the Lions Club. Is, is you, do you want to plan on that for twenty-three?
Yeah, that's the second half of the year. I just didn't get there. I went to July. Right through, for the most part.
I thought, I, I, I got a lot of comments from people that, that went well.
Yeah, the, that's a great event for us. I also need to connect with Ride and Drive Clean to see what they have going on. Um, they've been great partners and hopefully they'll have something going the first part of this year as well that we can, um, that we can partner on.
I'm sorry, so this is, you, you were just trying to do the first two, two quarters. Thank you, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because it feels like summer, there's like a lot, there's like a.
Yeah, I totally agree. I totally agree. Now, I, I, that, that went over my head. Thank you.
But we have an opportunity to really make twenty twenty-three a great year in terms of us being in the community and we've got Phoebe's support. So I just don't want it to slip away because time moves quickly and then the next thing you know, we're in April and then summer happens and it gets really quiet. So.
Yes.
Um, okay, I think that is it for me in terms of action here. Um, what I will do is I'll work with you, Dave, on connecting with your HOA and we'll get something going. Leslie, I'll work with you on the advocacy presentation.
That, um, for mine, it was like Mariner, Mariner Cove Plus.
Okay.
And then. And, and I'm, I'm active with the Mariner Cove one, so I can, I think the chair is Bob Bundy.
Uh, okay. Right.
Good, sort of house coming. I'm wondering if for each of these items, since on the discussion items, as their agendas, if the should be opened up for public comment. So we do have an audience member here, so.
Okay.
So David, if you want to open up for public comment.
Do we have a, uh, somebody from the public on now?
We do have a, uh, we do have somebody in the audience.
Oh, cool. Okay, I'm, I, I didn't see them. I apologize.
We don't have the camera work on it, but yes, we, we can attest there's somebody here physically.
Um, could we hear from the m- member of the public, please?
Nothing, nothing on this item.
Okay, thank you. I think, um, Phoebe, what we were, I think we can close on act, on act, on item eight. And move on to at, item nine. Good conversation. Um, do you want to introduce this one?
Yes, thank you, Chair Johnson. So this item is just to introduce an upcoming process to prioritize implementation of actions that are in the Climate Action Plan. So everyone has the agenda packet up, because I, I won't share because we'll have it already and so this is just a brief introduction of what the sort of process is gonna look like to do that. And the goal is to prioritize actions in the Climate Action Plan, but also consider uh, potentially some additional items because this uh, plan was adopted in twenty twenty and you know, it, there's been some, some changes since then and you had, all had the presentation from Christina Work, and she highlighted some additional items that other jurisdictions are doing in the county that this committee might want to consider as well. So the goal of the process would be to go through the Climate Action Plan, see which items are still relevant, see which additional actions might want to be incorporated, and then prioritize those. And so identifying um, primarily what item staff would be working on, but also identifying the committee's role in that process. And a lot of them, it's going to be in your advisory role, so advising staff and what you see as the priorities, how you think certain items should be implemented. And some of them might be more of a committee lead, like for example, the outreach that we've just been talking about. You all are already working on that and are really well positioned to continue that work. And so I included in the packets some criteria that, just to be sure that we're all on the same page of what sort of evaluation these processes are going through. So we're looking at how impactful an item is going to be as well as how feasible it is. And so there's some sort of elaboration on what that might look like. And the nice thing about your Climate Action Plan is that it already has a cost benefit analysis for all of the actions that are in there. So um, we can take that and then look at also additional items. Uh, like, for example, what opportunities are coming up countywide. So there's the EV accelerator strategy that's going to be coming from MCEP. That's something that maybe want to prioritize because there's an opportunity. There's already been work done at the county level, for example. And then I have in the staff report sort of a tenet, tentative process for and timeline for what the development might look like. And it's a little vague because I'm not sure how long it's going to take me to do some of the initial research and going through the Climate Action Plan. And but looking at, at the latest March, bringing my research back to this committee and pre- presenting on what's already been completed, uh, what other items might want to be incorporated, and then getting feedback from you all about what you see as the priorities, taking that back and drafting the work plan. And then once uh, you all review that and approve it, it is going to go to council for their approval. So that's sort of what the process looks like. I also included some links to examples of other climate action committees' work plans, so you could get an idea of what that might look like. And there's different formats and are there any questions on this item?
Where are the links? Um, I'm look, the document I have is PDF and it's numbered.
The links are on page nineteen of the Agenda Packet and it says attachments at the bottom of that page. Number three is examples of other climate action committees' work plans.
I, um, I think this is exciting. So in, in your timeline, everything looks great. So thank you for sharing that with us. Um, and the impact and feasibility pieces. Agree. And the links that you shared, they're all really great, but I do like the spastful one. So we're lucky there. Um, the way it looks and everything that's in there, um. The one thing I would just say about our cap, and this is like really in the weeds, um, is that it includes um, Wind Cup. Wind Cup used to be a factory, what was it, a styrofoam factory?
Styrofoam cup.
And so it, we can't tell what it did to the numbers, although we know that it reduced them when it went away, both on electricity and natural gas. So it's just something to think about as we think about the goals that are in the cap right now and maybe being
Yeah. MCE launched in twenty-ten. I don't remember exactly the year that um, the Wind Cup uh, manufacturing went away, but those two things had a big hit on, just in the background on our, our greenhouse gas emissions. It had nothing to do with what anybody was doing in their home, right? It didn't, it didn't meant nothing about, you know, your gas stove or your furnace or your car. It was just those two, those two um, events essentially that changed our local greenhouse gas emission picture profile. Thank you. So yeah, I, I think that's a really important thing to not be like, oh, look, we've, we, 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 we are way ahead of things because, but we're really not. It, it wasn't behavior change. So um, I think that we should be explaining that drop and, and why it happened. It was really because of MCE and because of, and that, I think for Corte Madera was not twenty-ten, it was more like twenty-twelve and or twenty-eleven or twenty-twelve when, when Corte Madera joined, but um.
Wind Cup was the big reduction.
It was the big reduction, yeah.
And I, when I first got the uh, cap, I did some uh, analysis trying to accommodate that, to show what the change had been since then. And I could revise that based on what oh, we've got now. Um, to show that, and it's not all that, it's, it's a good performance, even if you modulo the Wind Cup stuff. So I could the resurrect that to show what the differences have been.
Phoebe, the Wind Cup was, had a GHG footprint based on um, blowing agents for extruded polystyrene. So it wasn't just CO2 associated with um, operation carbon. It was, there was a, most of the GHG reduction was in the moving away from the blowing agents.
Because they can't, but you can't parse it out.
They also use, they, they also were a big consumer of energy and water.
Yeah. So you can't parse it out, but what you can do is look at the change since then to see what the changes have been. Uh, and, and it is still pretty good.
And I should also mention on this item, one of the things that is definitely going to be in that work plan is revisiting the reach code for remodels. So that's something we already know is.
Thank you. I'll, I'll comment. This, this is really useful and I, um, you started in December. And right, your official start was in December?
Yeah, I, I started two weeks ago.
Yeah, and this is, this is what we asked for you to bring to us, to help us start to communicate and, and build expectations together. And boy, does that do that. So a ton of gratitude for me on this.
So any other comments or questions on this item, or should we open up to public comment?
No, let's close item, uh, uh, item number nine.
I, I think we do have a public comment, actually.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Hi, Jean Severinghouse from East Green Bay. I'm actually on the Green Bay Boardwalk, which is officially in the Corte Madera sphere of influence. And I'm very interested in climate change and have been an active transportation advocate for twenty years. Um, so I'm glad that, that you picked up that it's good to not just talk about electric vehicles, but all kinds of mobility improvements. Thank you. I'm very interested in the preservation of the Martian climate change and I didn't hear any of that addressed tonight, but it looks like the um, update is going to address sea level rise in some way. At least the, I'm going to go back and reread the twenty-twenty report and will, will sea level rise and um, actions in the marsh be addressed in the Climate Action Plan? You know?
Can I speak to this? So, um, um, Town of Corte Madera has graciously brought on um, a, a staff member to help the Climate Action Committee. And Phoebe, you have two um, areas of focus in your position. One is climate adaptation and climate action. And um, and, and when the, the job description was created and we hired uh, Phoebe, that was, um, I knew this question was going to be coming up. Um, and that this body, I hope, can be focused on climate action. And, and it, and in our um, in starting this with Town Council, we overtly described three areas of focus for the Climate Action co- committee, and that was decarbonization, um, increased efficiency and uh, um, uh, electric vehicles. I'm going from memory dangerous here, but um, although we have one staff member that is uh, that is addressing the issues of climate adaptation and the climate action. Those are really, and we're trying to focus on, on the on the focus of this body, seeing that the two issues are closely tied together. But we want for the town to be active and the surrounding communities in the region to be active on climate adaptation. It just is not where our focus is at this time for this body.
I'm, I'm glad to hear it because I think climate action has been long missing from the conversation and we've been focused on adaptation. So thank you all for your work.
Not seeing any further public comment.
Okay. Um. Any other public, so no other further public comments. I really appreciated that question. And um, item number ten, future agenda items, then we talked about one item in particular.
The one item that you talked about, Dave, and then I would also ask if we could just keep a standing um, outreach item around what's coming up in the next six months.
Okay, the, the first item was, um, in our January meeting to talk about, to agendize some discussion around the projected increase in natural gas utility costs through PG and E. And um, unfortunately, people will start to be seeing their bills for December in January. I, I, I'm wondering if we still want to agendize that as a topic. I, my, my recommendation is we we agendize it as a topic and see if any of the public wants to talk about it.
Good idea.
And, and to that, though, is there a way for the town to get an announcement out? I think that that's really essential. And if you guys have connections specifically to organizations, um, I'm thinking of um, the intergenerational um, aging group. Um, just right off the top of my head, um, just whatever we can do to let people know that their ener- energy usage is going to cost them a lot more um, in, in their, their future bills. I'm just trying to protect people.
Can I, I just, in turn, is there a source of information that you have found related to this? That would be something we could.
I will.
I would recommend, um, actually putting it through to Martin, to Martin's, um. News.
Sure. Yeah, I've got, I've got several, several pieces of information, but, but it's getting it, it's getting it. Out beyond a link or a note on the Climate Action Committee's page on the website. It's, it's something that is really, it's a, there's a duty to warn. In my opinion, there's a duty to warn to let people know that. For those especially who are on a fixed income, that they may be trying to figure out if they have to pay their, their, their energy bill. Or can they buy food? I mean, it's, it's projected to be that bad. So. That's why I'm, I feel a sense of urgency about this.
Yeah, so that's something that. We can work with Martin or whoever to get that information out. Another potential feature agenda item, which is sort of related to that topic is there's been a. A request from MCE to present to this committee again. And they do have a bill savings program. And that's something that that person could come share with this committee about, and that's something we could promote on the towns.
PG&E has the care program as well and, and MCE has a. Parallel. Program, but. Yeah, you have to be enrolled in the care program to take advantage of it. So if you're not already enrolled. I'm theoretically on a fixed income. I, I have resources to, to manage all of this. I'm also knowledgeable about it, but there are so many people who. You know, are living paycheck to paycheck and a, a bill that goes from $200 to $800 in one month is, is, is going to. Have a significant impact. So.
Send me stuff.
Um, is it possible that we. Put a, in a, a source of information in the agenda? Topic? Can we embed a, a state figure into the agenda? Regarding. So we're going to be issuing our agenda in the first part of January. End of December.
No, the, the agenda would come out three days before the meeting. So.
But if we had, if we had something that. Uh, we get this, one of our members gave to staff. As the agenda item was being. Created. Can that, like a state of California data point be provided in the agenda?
Yeah.
If there is one, so I'm just.
Put in the agenda as a topic that we're going to discuss.
Yeah.
Yeah, it can be there.
And. So to follow.
Do we have a volunteer to provide that to staff?
I don't know, but the, the California data point, what I have is. Spot prices, reports on.
Yeah.
On the, yeah, I, I'm going to send what I have. Graphs, reports and Reuters article and something for PG&E.
I think, yeah, what I heard was, I heard two requests. One was, was from staff. Do you have something that you have that you're ready that you can share with us?
Yes.
So that, so that we can understand this. And then the second, the second request was, can we include in the agenda? A recent data point that. That we can. Refer to of, of why we're going to talk about this topic. And that wouldn't be until the second week in January.
The second. I'm not quite sure what you're asking. On that data point piece and. I'm, I'm just not sure what you're asking.
We have so, we have so little time to work as a committee, but. So the town staff was asking if, if, if Leslie, you could provide some information that you have about this topic. And I think that was, you agreed to do that. The second one is just as this item gets agendized for our next meeting. I was just asking if, if, if staff. Could include a recent article or something that has come up of, of, that this is going to, that, that. That would give us some reinforcement to the reason why we're encouraging this discussion being talked about.
Why don't. When Phoebe, when the draft agenda goes out. Dave, you and I can look at it and one of your resources can be either included or something updated. And.
I just didn't know if we could, if we could work with staff on, on including some, a link to a recent article or something.
Yeah, but we can. So while when the draft comes out, we will use either one of the links that Leslie sends or something more current if it's outdated.
Current, yes. Thank you, Amy. Something more, a more current version that's, because here it is, the, you know, the first, second weekend.
We got you. So I, for MCE, they are coming next. Is that, was that?
So it's a question for the committee, whether you'd like to have a presentation from MCE and I. Think there's opportunity for you to request if there's any specific topics you want them to cover.
I would, let me know. I would love to see MCE and I would love to hear about deep green and what our adoption is and any movement there and also. How deep green will evolve over 2023.
Since they, they reached out to you to offer to come back, what were they thinking of? What?
I think they were hoping to just reconnect with the committees and they haven't been here since you were a formal committee. And so, you know. Give an overview and explore partnership opportunities.
Great. And yeah, I think that. Understanding. All the programs that MCE offers. Most people probably don't even know that they're MCE customers because their bill looks like a PG&E bill. And MCE is just a line item that says generation for electricity. So. Being a nonprofit agency as opposed to an investor owned utility. All the money that they get from the ratepayers after paying contracts and salary. Goes into programs and they're significant programs. And so not only are people not aware that they're even a customer, they're not necessarily aware. Of what MCE has to offer. So I think. If we, again, it's one of those things, it would be wonderful to be able to record that and have it on our website. And this is what's available to you. And it's, it's, you know, it's, it's. All kinds of, of programs. It's, it's installing, helping install solar. EV charging in, you know. Energy efficiency, it, the list goes on and on. Multi-family homes, single-family homes, commercial. It's just, there, there's a whole, you know, smorgasbord of programs that people just don't know about. And that kind of falls into our whole outreach of. What can you do and, and how do you do it? So if they can just come in and give us the full. The full download, that would be great for our community.
I, I'd also like to hear them address grid resiliency. They come, so I think that's an.
I, I, I think it's a great idea to come, have them come in, in January. I, because the timing, there were a number of questions that came from, from town council and from the public. About implications with MCE customers in the reach codes. And. And.
Reliability was.
Yeah, and, and the cost, yeah, the reliability of electrification of the grid. And MCE was quoted in the, in, in the documents as. Attesting to the fact that from their point of view, from their research and data. From the point of MCE, there was no risk to overtaxing the, the capacity of the grid. So if they could come back with information on that, I think that would be helpful.
It is.
And there is another thought along those lines. Could we do a joint meeting with the council or could this presentation or a presentation like this? Be given just to the council because there was really, I mean, the council members have full-time jobs and families and life. And they can't possibly be experts on all the things that they're called to, you know, the commissions that they're on and whatnot. So. Helping them understand. The details here I think would be really helpful for their decision process.
So I'd like to, is there anybody who would oppose MCE coming to me with us in January?
They need to bring swag this time.
I think that's, we'll take that as, we'd like to talk to them in January, February. The sooner the better from my point of view. We'd like to accept their request.
Great.
Any other future agenda items?
Well, we'll have to have a, something on the website. Whatever has happened, we'll review what's happened by that time. So that should be on there.
Good, that's great.
That, that could be also a subcommittee update or a staff update.
Okay. Um, do we, are we, we at risk if we don't agendize something and want to take an action?
Yes.
Um, does the subcommittee want to agendize this in case we take an action?
We can see at what point the website's at, at that point, whether it's just an update or whether it's ready for.
But if it's on the agenda, we could vote on something. That comes up on it, right?
Yeah.
Well. I think you. We're going to have a website.
In a way that conveys that there's some.
Yeah, we're going to have an update and an approval of.
Right.
Website content.
Or, yeah, discussion and recommended. Approval or it could be with change.
With changes, yes.
Or tables.
We've only got seven years left in this decade.
Yeah.
I think, I think having the ability to take an action and, and in front of the public, I think would be in our advantage. In this case, because I think we think that the communication in the website is really important. So if we, if we agendize it and we want to take an action, then we can. Or we can defer it.
You can keep it on the agenda then.
We're covered.
Yeah. We're trying to be good, Brown Act members here. Any other future agenda items? Okay, well, I really want, let's, let's close that, move on to adjournment. I personally wanted to thank staff for. Rearranging this so that it could happen on a Monday evening instead of a Wednesday evening. I hope that staff has a. Fabulous holiday party. And that we all can get away from our day to day and enjoy some times with our friends and family. And I, I'm, I feel like. Although this might be herky-jerky at times with a bunch of citizens here. I'm really grateful for this body and the work that, that we're all doing. It was amazing tonight. So, any other comments before we adjourn?
I want to second what you just said and wish everyone a really lovely holiday and a very happy new year. We've got work to do, but. It's a great team.
So our next meeting is January 18th at 4:30. Thank you so much. Our meeting adjourned.